Our meeting to order at 7:18 PM. Once again, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Roll call Denise.
Here.
Roger.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
Rosemary.
Here.
Myself here. Nick.
Here.
Thank you. And Rosemary, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
Attention salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. During closed session, the board took action on the following items. Student discipline case number FYE 22-3. The board accepts the recommendation of the panel with the modification of increasing the attendance requirement to 90%. In student discipline case number FYE 22-4, the board accepts the recommendation of the panel with the modification to increase the attendance requirement to 90%. Items 9B1 through 9B6 with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Rosemary. The vote was unanimous to accept the items. Items 9C1 through 9C6 with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick. The vote was unanimous to accept all items. Items 9D1 through 9D13 with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick. The vote was unanimous to accept all items. On resolution FY number 22-38, in closed session, the board took action to issue a notice of release to a temporary teacher pursuant to Education Code Section 44954A effective immediately and directed the superintendent or designated to issue the appropriate legal notice to the employee. The roll call vote was as followed with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Rosemary. The eyes were Roger, Jennifer, Rosemary, Diane, and Nick. There were no, 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 no votes, no abstentions, and no one was absent. Oh, that was a lot. Okay. I'm getting ahead of myself. All right. We'll move on to school reports. I see Matam there. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening. Ag Olympics. On Friday, February 4th, the Selma High Ag Department came out during lunch to hold their annual Ag Olympics. Students were able to sample various ag-related items such as welding, orange juice squeeze, floral designing, and animal care with the goat. Eagle store. The ALMS Eagle Store will be open during lunch. Students can turn in their eagle bucks for various items such as snacks, markers, books, and toys. Virtual orientation. We will be holding orientation virtually this year for our incoming 7th and 8th grade students. On Thursday, February 17th. If you would like to attend, please contact the ALMS office for login information. Kindness Week. Next week is Kindness Week at ALMS. The theme is Be the Eye in Kind. Activities include kindness bingo, kind pictures, positive post-its, and campus beautification. We are encouraging students to be kind to themselves, one another, your campus, and their environment. Athletics. There is a huge congratulations to the following wrestlers who placed in the CVAL League Tournament. Carlos Malgoza, first place, 112-pound weight class. Manuel Gutierrez, first place, 128-pound weight class. Isaiah Ramos, fourth place, 153-pound weight class. And Lydia Arango, second place, 128-pound weight class. The spring season is starting today with tryouts for baseball, softball, track, and boys tennis. Season openers will take place on March 9th. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to take time to congratulate the wrestlers for a job well done.
Oh, yeah.
That's fantastic. Good job. Yeah, good job, guys.
Maybe have them.
Bring the wrestlers to. Put on notes, please, Rose, to bring them.
All right. And Denise, what's going on at Selma High?
All right. So coming up, we have a community blood drive, which begins March 2nd against Kingsburg from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM. And we will have talent show auditions beginning February 23rd through 24th. On February 25th, we have a rally. And on the day after, on the 26th, we finally have the winner formal. And for athletics, it's currently in postseason for all winter sports. Boys basketball team received an eight seed and will be home tonight versus Tulare Western at 6:00 PM. Girls soccer is an 11 seed and plays at Cruthers tonight at 6:00 PM as well. Girls basketball is an 11 seed and plays at Miramonte on Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. And athletics is currently selling tickets with our CIF partner, GoFan. And you can buy all playoff tickets electronically for Selma High School playoff games at the GoFan website.
So that's current. When was the blood drive begin?
The blood drive begins March 2nd, and it's against Kingsburg. It's going to be a little competition.
Are we going to get, well, more information go out about that?
Yeah. They're going to send out, I think, this week, and the winner gets like a plaque with the name on it.
Awesome. Yeah, the valley is in huge need of blood. So just, I'll throw that out there as a mention.
And do we have a score on the game?
So Denise.
The one right now.
The. Mr. Dixon, can we put the blood drive on Parent Square? And then we'll send it out to all employees?
Absolutely.
In the district? Because the valley is.
It's huge. It's huge.
It's really bad right now, and we want to beat Kingsburg.
Exactly.
Both. We'll do both. More blood and Kingsburg.
We get a mini fire hydrant.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Denise. At this time, I'll go ahead and open for public input. An opportunity is provided for individuals to address the board on topics within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board not listed on this agenda. If you wish to address the board on an agenda item, please do so when that item is called. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes with a total of 30 minutes designated for this portion of the agenda. Time limitations are at the discretion of the president of the board. Individuals with questions on school district issues may submit them in writing. The board will not take action, but will instead refer to the superintendent any formal requests that are brought before them at this time. Do we have any public comment?
Yes. Melissa Solario, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing from me.
Never.
I'm not going anywhere. Okay. So, good evening, Dr. Shepherd, Board, Faculty. My name's Melissa, and I'm the parent of senior here at Selma High. I just want to say I appreciate the district's wise decision to continue with the foggy day schedule and allow students to be dropped off prior to 10:00 AM if needed. I'm aware the winter formal was postponed due to COVID protocol. However, I was under the impression that our Marine Corps ball was going to be the test subject to see if anyone came back positive, and I don't think anyone did. So I was formal pushed back. It's been two years. COVID isn't going anywhere. So I ask that you please stop ruining these special events for these students. There's no reason for it. If people are afraid, understandably so, then they don't have to attend. But why take it away from those who would like to be involved in these activities? With senior trips and graduations just around the corner for my son and the rest of the senior class, I'm interested that the district will not cancel any of these memorable celebrations. Let's not forget the hundreds of kids from the class of 2020 and 2021 that were extremely let down by the district because some of their most important high school accomplishments were taken away from them. Let's not make that mistake again. Email regarding the death of a student back in January, I give my condolences to the family. However, why does the district feel that telling the students about the death of their peer when they are at school is a better option than them being told at home by their parents or their families? I don't believe my son knew the student. However, if it was someone close to him, I would want to be the one to tell him, not the school. I feel school districts tend to overstep in issues that should be left to parents or families, like getting the vaccine, sexual education, and politics, just to name a few. Notice regarding the spread of Omicron and the recommendation of wearing N95 masks. Omicron symptoms are cold symptoms. It's not a variant that causes hospitalization or death, especially not in school-aged children. We have been dealing with viruses and colds throughout history. They aren't going anywhere. In an experiment done in this picture, in this picture, the amount of CO2 that stays in the student's mask in just seconds causes dizziness, sleepiness, increased heart rate, nausea, oxygen deprivation, not to mention bacterial pneumonia, severe acne, and anxiety. In this picture, the student is wearing a mask in between 1,000 and 2,000 parts per minute. There's poor air quality and drowsiness. Between 2,000 and 5,000 parts per million, headache, sleeplessness, sleepiness, loss of attention, increased heart rate, and slight nausea. Over 5,000 parts per minute toxicity and oxygen deprivation can occur. His number is 8,486 parts per million. And you want students to wear N95 masks for eight hours a day? It's child abuse. Our school officials and teachers mandated reporting. While wearing masks is mental and child, and just school child abuse. Either you don't know the science or you don't care. I picked up my son from school one day, and students and teachers are wearing masks outside. There's no reason for masks outside. Let the kids take off their, they should, the kids should know to take off their masks and get some fresh air. Did every, and I wear my times up, but did everyone see Governor Newsom at the playoffs on January 30th not wearing his mask? Yet he wants our kids to wear their mask all day long. He lied and said he only took it off for a brief second. He's a tyrannical, he's a tyrannical governor and a dictator.
Stop you with that because this is not the place for.
Okay.
Well, it's just anything that.
Well, it is because he's mandating these masks for our kids, and he's out enjoying himself while our kids are sitting there suffering in these masks. So.
But that is not something under our jurisdiction.
No, that's fine. I just, it's public comment, so I thought I'd say it. So anyways, thank you for your time. Pastor Louis Quintana announced that he's running for mayor, and if the board doesn't start making changes for the sake of our kids, Christian conservatives are going to come for the board seat. So it's time for us to take back our city and our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to our discussion and action items. Jennifer, would you like to read resolution FY 2239?
Yes. I will read it. So this is resolution FY 22-39. Whereas Black History Month began in 1915, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States as the creation of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans. And whereas especially during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our national and state economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas a precursor to the civil rights movement, Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans, a time for recognizing the central role of members of the African desaporia in United States history. Sorry, I butchered some words here. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to highlight the stories, teachings, suffering, and contributions of African-Americans who gave voice to the daily struggles for freedom, equality, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas, because of determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance, Black Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country, state, nation, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas, our history curriculum must reflect the lived experiences of people of all racial, religious, and ethnic groups. And whereas, all students need an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people to develop pride in their own cultural identity and heritage and to respect and accept the identity and heritage of others. And whereas during Black History Month, we focus on the crucial role of education in the history of Black Americans. Now, therefore, we, the Selma Unified Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 to be Black History Month in Selma Unified School District. Be it further resolved that the Selma Unified Board of Trustees strongly encourages our staff, students, and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of Black Americans to our country, our state, our beautifully diverse county, and our school, not only during Black History Month, but throughout the school year.
Wonderful. At this time, I need a motion to adopt resolution FY 22-39. I second. A motion from Nick and a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved. And our census and redistricting of board trustee areas.
So tonight, we're asking that the board review, have a public hearing, and then make a decision regarding the new redistricting of our trustee areas. With us is Brian Martin. Thank you for being here. And Carolyn Cho from Cooperative Strategies, who has done all this work. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Yeah. Good evening again, Board President Jensen, trustees, and Dr. Shepherd. So we're here for the, looks like it's the fourth public hearing on the adjustment of the trustee areas post 2020 census in order to comply with the Voting Rights Act. So I am here, and Carolyn is here for any additional questions, concerns that any of the board members might have. I understand that Carolyn did provide some additional details on the maps to assist the board in fine tuning your consideration and coming to a decision. But we're here to answer any final questions or if you have any, you know, follow-up concerns. We're here to address them.
Do you have any questions, concerns from the board?
So you want to briefly go through them real quick? But Nick has a question.
I just have a question on scenario two. That my district two, it's been extended to the East River.
Yes.
And so is three scenario.
Can you hear the question, Carolyn?
No, I couldn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was on. So my question is on scenario two and three. Area District Two, it extended to the East River on that basically 99 corridor. Is that based on a population or how does it? That my area is already way big. Area two now is even more bigger. So that's like in my area is like a 30 miles by 30 miles, and now it's even more bigger. So what was that? How does that? You guys came up with that? I'm just curious.
So all, all three scenarios are drawn to balance the population. Right? So your population variance between your largest or, yeah, largest populated trustee area and your least populated trustee area is less than 10%. So while your area two is geographically large, it is balanced with regard to population.
It's, I think it's a matter of the population density is closer in. And when you get out into those larger trustee areas that are more rural, less population, so there has to be possibly some expansion in the territory in order to get that balancing. So I think that's where the adjustments essentially, that's kind of the concept for the balancing of those areas.
Thank you.
Do you want your variance to be closer to 10% or farther away? I mean, where, where?
Well, yeah, that's a good question. All of the maps that have been prepared by Carolyn are legal maps because they are all under the 10% threshold, the target, so to speak, for, for meeting the requirements of the, of the law. So beyond that, there really is not any kind of additional criteria. So it would be just up to the board to determine which one that, you know, they think suits the, the community and the district best. But, but no, there isn't any kind of further criteria to.
Okay. If you want it somewhere.
Mr. Martin, out of curiosity, what if a district wanted to go to, to at-large again? Is that possible? Without being sued or?
No. I mean, I couldn't guarantee you wouldn't, no.
I've just, that's just.
There's probably, I'll put it this way, there's probably no clean or safe way to do it. You know, bulletproof. You'd be susceptible to, to lawsuit.
I just think at-large is actually the best for community. Anyway, this, it was just something I was thinking of.
So just to review, so scenario one makes the fewest changes to your, your areas, your boundaries. It also has the highest variance. Scenario two is your lowest variance, and there's a lot more changes to, to your trustee areas. And scenario three just tries to make your trustee areas a little more compact and contiguous than scenario two. Some districts like to go with the lower variance to try to avoid having to redistrict in 2030. But if you don't foresee a lot of change in your population, then that might not be a consideration for you. If you want to see just as little change as possible and just, just enough to, to get you into compliance, then scenario one would probably be your choice.
Any other questions? Okay. Then at this time, I'm hereby calling the public hearing on the census and redistricting of the board of trustees areas to order. Is there anyone present to speak on the matter to be considered at this hearing? Anyone here who would like to address the board on the districting? Seeing no one, the public hearing on the census and redistricting of the board of trustees areas be hereby concluded. So we do need to determine what scenario.
Do you just want us to make a motion or do we want to?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve scenario number one, just seems to be the least disruptive.
Do we have a second?
Can we ask a question right now before we second it?
Oh, yeah.
We know there's two that are going to be here for a while still. I'd like to get their input on which one they like.
I mean, I, I like the scenario three. That way I have more into the, the city. My office is here in the city, and I deal with the more peoples in the city than in the countryside. But I don't know, other areas?
Rosemary?
Rosemary?
I kind of like three.
Okay.
I can change my motion easily. I can pull my motion back, and I'm going to re-motion to approve scenario three.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Roger to accept scenario number three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Thank you, Carolyn and Brian. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for your work.
My pleasure.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Dixon.
Good evening, Board Member. Good, excuse me, good evening, Board President Jensen. It's been a long day.
I'm glad.
Trustees, Superintendent Shepherd, and executive team. Today, just an update on our COVID. And the presentation comes up, and then board members do have a copy of the presentation. We are seeing that the COVID numbers, we're working hard at it, trying to get the numbers down. So in January, we did have 711 confirmed cases that were reported to school sites. One thing to keep in mind with these, sometimes it was a child that was not on campus. They are calling the school site to report a case, and then it became one of our confirmed numbers. So as we looked at January, some of these are the confirmed cases where students who never came onto campus while sick. Then in February, so far, we've seen 155 cases. You can see the numbers. We do have our sites that have in-person are ranging anywhere from four up to 34, actually 35 confirmed cases on their sites. So this, I've just taken the January and February numbers. You can find this on our district website. When you click on the district websites, click on the COVID-19 information, and it will take you to our dashboard. And this is updated every day. Today, we had 39 cases that were reported. Again, some of those are cases that the student became sick during the weekend and was not on campus when they were becoming ill. As we go on to the next one, each board meeting, I report on our case numbers on the ages five to 18 years of age. As we've seen, the Omicron variant is very highly contagious, spreads very quickly. Sometimes it's not the three to five-day incubation. Sometimes it is shorter. In late January and in the first week of February, we did see the cases increase. It just skyrocketed. And if you look at some of the charts, it just went up. I mean, not quite straight, but it was up very, a very high rate. Fortunately, it is decreasing, but not at the same rate that it went up. We're seeing, according to the information provided by Fresno County Department of Public Health. We're seeing, according to the information provided by Fresno County Department of Public Health. Fresno County spiked on January twentieth. There were two thousand eight hundred and twenty nine cases that day alone. Last day that's been reported is February ninth, there were six hundred and eighty four cases. So again, we're seeing it is getting better out there. The cases are decreasing. The information looking at a thirty day caseload. Selma right now, not where we want to be. We are second in the county. Only Fresno city is in front of us. So we're looking at, we had our thirty day numbers increased two hundred and thirty seven point seven percent. On January twenty fourth, it was one sixty three. On January tenth, it was fifteen percent. Next meeting, I will be able to say it has decreased greatly, I'm expecting. So we are seeing that our, right now, they're predicting on March first, we will be. Close to where we were on the number of cases as it was in September. So we're seeing that decrease. On our next slide, you'll see that we have closed a number of classrooms. Again, when we're looking at classrooms, we got three or more. Cases in the classroom and we can't find a cause from outside as in family members are sick or they got it from somewhere outside a classroom. We are then having to look at closing classrooms. We did close classrooms at ALMS, Garfield, Indianola, Jackson, Roosevelt and Wilson Elementary. And there was a class that was closed at the high school that Fresno County closed. In total, it's been sixteen classes that have been closed since January tenth. And in those, we did have staff and students. Large numbers were being, you know, positive at that time. We're not saying that there was always transmission within the classroom, but due to the high percentage, especially when we look at the TK. Three classrooms, there were showing like eight students in a classroom being positive. And we have a class of twenty four, they were looking at a high percentage of students, so they were closing the classroom. And we're still continuing with our contact tracing. We still have lots of testing going on. You know, at the school sites and at the district office. Just a quick review there of our protocols that we're following. So when someone is showing symptoms or sick, we're asking them to test. After day five, first day of symptoms or the positive is day zero. So some people would be day six instead of day five. So if they are testing and with our rapid test, if they're showing that they're negative, then they're allowed to return back to school. If they're still with symptoms or with a positive, or they choose not to test, then they're staying out the ten days. And that's with our staff and students. Again, we're continuing to follow the state of California. Public health and Fresno County Public Health Guidance and we're still testing with our athletics and. The the positive thing is with our spring sports are outdoors, so we won't be testing with them, but we will be keeping. Track of what's going on there and asking them to, when they are in close contact, to be wearing masks. On our next slide, we are talking about masking. Face masks are still required in the school sites. Any school building, a mask needs to be worn or draped face shield. So some type of. Again, protection face mask or face shield must be worn. Face mask should be worn also when social distancing can't be maintained outside. So the kids are out in recess. They're out kind of spread out, they can take their mask off, but if they're close together, we're recommending the mask is still on because they're not socially distancing. One of the examples of that, we've seen kids are just, they're all, you know, there's ten kids sitting, I mean, they're right face to face. They should still have masks on. We're saying spread out and I've seen this when I've been here at the high school and some of the other school sites. The kids are, they're standing away from each other and they're taking their masks off. That's when it's appropriate they're socially distancing.
Mr. Dixon, can I stop you real quick on that? Can we do it to where? I know you talked about social dis- distancing outside with for the mask, but. We've seen pretty much the country kind of flip all of a sudden, except for California, of course. I would like the kids not to wear the mask outside. I think it's. I think it's actually damaging, right? You wear it all day. I was outside doing the lawn the other day and I saw kids walking the track. And I had my mask on, you know, because of the. The dust coming up from lawnmower and it was hard to breathe then. Now I'm thinking, you know what? That's bullshit. Excuse my language, that's bull that those kids are out there. Walking on track. I would like this board to actually think about. Living kids not where the masks are actually saying, kids shouldn't wear masks during recess time or even.
We don't require it, we recommend.
No, we don't recommend it, but the kids are all wearing it because no one's saying.
They're used to it now, yeah.
We've we've seen a lot of them that, I mean, I've been on campuses where the kids are like in a big circle and they're spreading out and they're taking their masks off. But it's when they're really close together, especially when we saw this in the fall and in January. Some sites are saying where, when they're tracing it back, it was happening, kids were face to face. With, you know, getting in small groups and so that's when it was spreading.
Yeah, it's it's the elementary level also with these kids are kind of, I mean, it's really sad to watch. I don't, my guy, I don't want him wearing it all day.
So it's not required when you're trekking or running or?
Oh, no.
No, we've actually, you know, PE coaches for elementary have contacted me and I've talked to secretary coaches also. I said, if they're running, they shouldn't have masks on. They're they're spread out. And so when they're doing anything that's exerting themselves, they should take their masks off. That was the recommendation I gave the coaches. It's when they're close and they're just kind of like stretching, but they're real close together. You know, it's, we need to look at that, especially if they're inside a gym. But when they're spread out, taking masks off, you know, it's that social distancing we're looking at.
So can we reiterate that to the schools? Administration?
Because it's hard.
Make sure the kids know that when they're outside, they don't have to have it on if they can socially distance.
This this wording actually was taken from an email that we did send out to the site administrators. And that question about, well, what about outside? And we said, you know, if they're close together and they're not socially distancing, it's recommended. But we've seen a lot of our kids, our kids have gotten used to it and so they spread out. And so they're taking their masks off. I've watched kids, they'll be up with their friends, mask on and they'll take it off as they walk away. So, you know, again, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, sports, definitely, we don't need a mask and if it's lunchtime, I, you know, probably the kid's going to get together. Then it does require it, I guess.
Well, lunchtime, we have seating charts for the elementary, so they are keeping that for our contact tracing. So they say, who's sitting next to each other? Because they are taking them off while they're eating.
Is there any districts not wearing masks, not following the mandates? Do we know?
You know, I I don't know the answer.
What would happen if we didn't wear masks? I'm just asking.
Yes, it is requirement, but but our numbers are still high here in Selma. And that's a concern and that means kids aren't in school and it exposes our our teachers as well, so. And they are dropping. So we anticipate on February twenty eighth, the state will. Timeline then release it.
I think that's it, that's going to be the big issue.
Yep, it is.
So you you, so you you don't mandate it anymore inside, but we're mandating it, or the state mandated it for the kids. Just doesn't sit well with a lot of people.
So as Dr. Shepherd did state, so we are looking forward, that's been one of the things. Dr. Shepherd has allowed myself to log in and listen to our superintendent's meeting, so. Jim Navino, the county superintendent, does a weekly meeting with Fresno County Department of Public Health. And one of the things they, the superintendents are asking for is, what is a timeline? What are, what are we looking at as the matrix? And so the state has stated that on February twenty eighth, they will release. What is the matrix? What what are they can look at the standards so we can start saying, when will masks start being, you know, in the school sites? Because starting today, it was out that if you're immunized in public places, you're not required to wear a mask. And so we did send out a parent square out yesterday, again, sharing in school sites. Masks are still required indoors for all district buildings. Going on to the next one, it's just kind of a graphic that they did share at a meeting with California Department of Public Health. Looking at, we would be looking at the the twenty eighth where they will release information about school masking. Our next slide, just real quickly, we have received from the state, working with the Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. We received almost six thousand, so five thousand nine hundred N ninety five masks. Those were out to the school sites. We've received almost fifty four thou-, well, over fifty four thousand KN ninety five masks. And those have been delivered out to the school site. So we have plenty of masks out there. Again, looking at the graphic, these are the masks that are much more effective. In helping to stop the spread of the COVID virus. And right now, I'd like to give a shout out to our warehouse team. Whenever we've gotten these shipments, they've gone out, picked them up and distributed them out within just a couple of days and and we're talking, you know. When you're looking at fifty eight, you know, fifty four thousand masks, so getting these out.
So these are all for the kids too, right?
These are out there to a school site, these are for staff and students. They are multi-day use ones like the. N ninety five should be, they can be worn three to five days. So also staying clean. And then we also are expecting notification to receive more of the children's size. Because some of our primary grades, you know, TK through three, the masks are very big on them. So we're we're supposed to get more surgical masks and the KN ninety five that are children's size. So we're waiting for notification when those are coming in to the county warehouse and we'll be picking those up. Any questions?
Events, are we going to continue seeing some of these events? I heard.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I heard in the podium, somebody was mentioning, but we want to continue to have events on. Obviously, the high school graduations coming up too. So if in the COVID continues to goes.
So with, so I have not been directly involved in the discussion of some of these events. I have been in discussions with Mike Palacy as we looked at with the winter formal. And how we can do some testings for those students that are not fully vaccinated. And so we are going to be on the Friday before the winter formal. Mike Palacy and I have discussed. We're going to be creating a forum for those students to schedule a time. We're going to be testing before school. Lunchtime and after school, so we can get as many students who want to go, we can get them in. And and get the testing done. So if they're cleared, we can get them to where they can participate. So that, oh, I couldn't get a test, is not going to be excuse. So I talked to Mike, we'll be here till four, five o'clock, whatever time it takes. That Friday afternoon to get everyone taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Have any questions, other questions from the board?
Waiting for you to talk.
Yeah, she go on the Fresno County Department of Health website, they updated it today. And the graph looks almost exactly going up and coming down. It looks, the trend is almost the same as going up. And we've seen it, I know the hospital I work at, I just looked at their numbers, the community puts out three times a week and. Our numbers over the past week have dramatically, dramatically decreased.
They have and but we do need to be, again, still very aware because what I heard yesterday, so between Friday and. Yesterday, there were twenty eight deaths in Fresno County. So we still need to be very careful out there. But again, you know, looking at, you know, what we can do to keep everyone safe. And, you know, as we still, again, keeping our classes open, keeping students in school. We tested about a hundred and thirty people today, students and staff at the district office. We got people showing up at seven fifteen in the morning and so we're getting them cleared and getting them back into the classroom. So that's our goal is to follow the guidelines, these protocols, but getting the students back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our calendars.
Based on the board's direction from the January twenty fourth board meeting, I solicited additional responses. From all of our employee groups and from parents regarding the revisions to the twenty two twenty three calendar. I've presented to the board a summary memo showing the percentage increases for classified and confidential employees. The numbers of participants went up from seventeen percent to seventy four percent. The number of certificated employees went up from sixty percent to ninety five percent. For classified and certificated management employees, the percentage of participation in the survey went from thirty two. To eighty nine percent. The parent participation went from twelve percent to twenty percent. Daily reminders were sent out. This was posted on social media, including Facebook and Instagram. Was posted through Parent Square numerous times. I enlisted the help of certificated staff members who operate in the classroom. They presented the parent calendar out through the Google, Google Classroom. And I also enlisted the help of our administrators on the school sites to also help. Publicize the participation in in this survey. So overwhelmingly, all of the groups did vote. For calendar choice number two. And again, I've shown the breakdown there. With our parent group, forty seven point three percent wanted choice number one, fifty two point seven wanted choice two. Similar with classified and confidential, forty three point three percent wanted choice one, fifty six point seven percent wanted choice number two. With certificated, twenty two point four percent wanted choice number one, seventy seven point six percent wanted choice number two. With our management employees, twenty one point three percent wanted choice number one, seventy eight point seven percent wanted choice number two. So again, overwhelmingly. All the groups did choose choice number two, which represents a start date for students of August eighteenth. And a ending date for instruction on June ninth. Certificated staff will report back on August eleventh. If you have any questions, it is my recommendation to the board to approve the calendar choices for. Classified, certificated management and the student parent calendars, again, representing choice number two.
Have any questions from the board?
It looks like, it looked like, it looks like it changed just a little bit. Well, actually, you got a lot more, it looks like a lot more people to participate, so that's, that's pretty awesome.
Do you have any questions or comments from the public on this issue?
I'll make a motion to approve choice number two.
I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Roger. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay? So moved to accept choice number two.
Thank you.
Good evening. The district is requesting to utilize the lease leaseback process. For selecting a contractor for its upcoming projects. And in order to do so, the district. Has to adopt required procedures and guidelines that's going to ensure that we select a contractor in a fair and impartial manner. The. The process will give us our best value for our money. We'll be able to use. The dollars that we save to fund additional projects. So we are, Mr. Hudson is assisting with preparing the RF. The RFQ, the request for qualifications, so that we can get that out once the board approves the resolution.
Have any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution at Y twenty two dash thirty three.
I have a question. So what what went changed from the previous? Then the procedure is changed for the the leaseback?
So instead of doing the hard low bid, we're able to actually get, go with the best value. And based on qualifications of the contractor and then the contractor will lead the projects and and. That will assist the district in not having to be so intertwined into the. The, you know, the minutia of the projects.
I seconded to Jennifer's motion.
I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick. All in favor say aye. I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
I thank you. Uh, the next item is uh to approve the issuance of a request uh for proposal. We have to go out. Our food service management services contract is up at June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Um, so the district is required to issue another uh request for proposal uh for the twenty-two, twenty-three year and possibly additional years. We are allowed to do up to four years, uh, four additional years on the contract if we choose to do so. Um, and it is stated in the request for proposal that that is a possibility. And this would, um, this will allow us to um simplify the cafeteria process as far as procurement and um the additional services that this group provides for us.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Um, just curious on this. So are we do the same thing? We qualify these people or is it just the same?
No, so the request for proposal is actually um lowest bid, the lowest cost. Um, it is a federal program, so they're a little more strict on uh how we procure services. And so it will be uh the lowest bid, and we do have um three uh companies already have contacted me that are interested, our our current uh company and two others.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve item eighteen F.
I'll second. Oh, a motion from Nick and a second from Jennifer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Okay, eighteen G. I'm very excited to announce that we have our final uh two uh members. Uh, Mr. Louis Franco has actually moved into the bona fide taxpayers' organization um section, and then um also recruited Mike Valverde as our uh second uh additional, our citizen at large. So we will have a full board upon the approval, and I've listed all of the members there for you.
Hey, that's a great uh group of people right there. I know most of them. You know, yeah, council member, ex-mayor, ex-SRO. I know the business owners. Anyway, it's a good group of people.
And they're, they're excited to be a part of this.
Yes.
Very fun. It was very fun to recruit them.
Wow.
We're very, very grateful to them for volunteering their time to to be on this committee.
Yeah, those guys are all passionate.
Yeah, so very excited. Um, any questions or comments?
No.
Additional?
I like to make the motion to accept the all those members.
My second. I have a motion from Roger and a second from Rosemary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
On eighteen H, uh, one, two, and three, I have revised job descriptions to present to the board. Uh, one includes my current job description, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources, with some minor changes and a change in the title to Chief Human Resources Officer. On H two, we have a revised job description for the Director of Child Nutrition. This includes updates from uh professional standards based on the USDA Food and Nutrition uh section. And on uh H three, a revised job description for intervention teacher, if you have any questions regarding these items.
Mrs. Mrs. Winter does.
Hey, I was quiet during the COVID conversation. So I do have some some concerns um regarding the intervention um position. In the past, and I know on this current one, it still is not going to be um going down to qualifications. Um, that's the wrong one. There we go. So the required, um, so the education and experience. No, I'm there, but why don't know why I'm seeing. So we don't have it as a requirement to have an additional um credential um for that position. We have it as preferred. And I know that we can't, it probably will not be at this point in time for us to go ahead and make that mandatory or strong, but I I think it needs to be strongly recommended that anybody going into this position should have additional training, whether it's um that that would qualify for for this position. So whether it's an additional um something in reading and literacy, um, or math, if they're if they're doing math intervention, that would um make them, that would qualify them. You know, in my world, I can't just go. I know I have to get additional training if I want to go from the ER to the ICU to the OR, you know, it's required that I have, you know, I have to have my nursing license. And we all have to have, take the same test, but I have to go for additional training to move within the hospital to different specialties. And to me, this is the same thing. This is, this is a different specialty. So I do like that we are requiring um um the district assigned additional training. And so I really do appreciate that, um, that that is added in there. But I think I just want to mention that I think going forward, I think we really need to strongly look at um that preferred um section and really, you know, encourage and, um, you know, it's best for what's, it's what's best for our students in this district to have the the most qualified person in this position. So.
Is that type of specialized training available at the elementary level or?
It's unlikely that you'll have a math credential teacher or even an English credential teacher, a single subject at the elementary level, because they're credentialed multiple subjects.
But you can have a specialist credential, so you can have.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a, well, you could have a reading specialist. Is there a math specialist credential? I've never seen that.
I've never seen that one either.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's very definitely a reading specialist.
Yeah, there is reading specialist. I've never seen a math specialist. Do you know anything? Okay. So I don't know.
I just think we really need to, when, when, when those, when those positions come open, I think it really needs to be looked at to make sure that it's the appropriate person who has the appropriate, appropriate qualifications to go into that position.
One thing we do look for is obviously experience, because they're gonna experience, classroom experience. For sure. And then, as Mrs. Winter pointed out, and we've had this discussion, that both the reading intervention and math intervention will have, everyone will be doing, be trained on how to do it, and we'll be following the same program and format.
I think that's.
That's where I think it, yeah, everybody's on the same page.
Yep.
Really gonna strengthen, it'll really strengthen the team as well. It'll really strengthen. We talk a lot about professional learning. It should be no different in the intervention. Every credential teacher is trained to do two things, teach the curriculum and then interview uh based on the success of students in class. So their teachers will already become experienced with some experience in the intervention. What's really gonna be nice is as we build this intervention network, that's gonna be their sole focus, right? So it's gonna help teachers in the classroom and the intervention teacher. But to your point, Board Member Winter, I think it's a sound point, and definitely, we're gonna be looking for the best qualified folks to serve in these positions.
I mean, I just, I just look in my world. I know there, there, there's a lot of similarities between the healthcare, you know, to to nursing and to education as far as teaching, as far as, you know, you, you have that basic foundation. We all go through the same nursing, you know, the same type of nursing school. We all have to sit for the same exam. You know, so there's that same basic foundation, but I'm gonna have additional training to go work in the OR or to go work in a specialty area, you know, and I just think that that same, that that needs to translate in the education world in the same way. That if you're gonna go work in what I would consider a specialty area, that you get that additional training to be qualified to work in that specialty area. Um, like when I went from, I, because I did work in the OR for a short stint, and I had to go through a six-month training program in order to be qualified to work in the OR. So um, just in my mind, they, they're very similar. So.
Yeah, and not to go off topic, but I think it's pretty awesome that we actually are addressing student achievement.
Absolutely.
I've been here off and on for a long time, and it isn't until this last year that we actually showed the numbers and are actually wanting to kick some butt on it.
Well, I think absolutely showing some changes, not just lip service.
Yeah, yeah, and we're doing it, and we're gonna do it. So.
Our teachers are making, well, our teachers are working very hard in addressing that issue and so, and giving them, helping them and supporting them, and that's our role, and that's what we're trying to do.
And I've never, like I said, never seen it until this last year. Never, Jennifer's been.
No, no. Oh, again, lip service. I'm happy to see that it, it's not just lip service anymore. So I appreciate that. So all in, make a motion to approve um eighteen H, one, two, and three.
I'll second.
A motion from Jennifer and a second from Roger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Thank you. On um eighteen I, there's a job description to create a dual immersion teacher uh position, and then also uh as part of the proposal is to create two dual immersion teacher positions. This would be for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The cost of that uh proposal would be uh the cost of basically two teachers ranging from um newly credentialed teachers to veteran teachers, one hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen, ranging up to two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and fifty. And again, that's for two positions, including statutory benefits and health and welfare benefits. The funding source would be from LCAP supplemental and concentration. Um, so again, if you, if the board has any questions uh regarding that, Mrs. Barahas Rees uh was instrumental in assisting with this um job description, and she's in the audience if you have any questions as well.
So I do have a question, not necessarily about the job description. Can I ask a question regarding the program itself?
Of course.
Is that appropriate?
Yes, of course.
Um, I'll wait for, I'm gonna get up to.
We're excited. Before you go there too, just to let you know, there's a grant coming out that we're applying for um for dual language immersion. So if we get the grant, the funds that we were gonna take out of our supplemental concentration can go to something else. So we're real excited about that.
Um, so my question is, is what kind of um have have we heard or an estimation? Numbers-wise yet, or we?
Yes, we did have our second parent informational session, the last week or the week before. Um, we did it virtual. We had um new parents, a few returning parents that came to the very first one back in November, but we had some new parents. Um, we're sharing the interest form with our TK classrooms, and so right now, we do have a little more than thirty um interest forms completed. It's still early.
Yeah.
Um, we know as word gets out that that number will increase. And amongst those thirty, there are a handful of students who would be coming from out of district. Um, and then some first graders who might be returning to the district. So that's why we're, we're really gonna keep open the the possibility of a K one or a first grade if we have enough students to fill it.
Great. That's, yeah, I'm super excited about this. I think that this is amazing. I, you know, gone to many CSBA seminars on dual immersion and the different types and the different, you know, way for dual immersion. I think it's amazing. I'm so excited.
Yes, and we do have a board update on just a couple of items. Um, when we met with parents, we um introduced Mrs. Salcedo, next slide, and talked about um the uh move, the consolidation of Washington coming over to Eric White and coming together to be our um initial site for our dual uh immersion program. Next slide. We had some of our Eric White staff just talk about some of the things that Eric White students have been involved in this school year. They talked about the different events, and just that that middle picture is how the EW staff uh greeted all students on the first day of school. So we wanted to give parents just a feel for Eric White. Next slide. We reviewed our goals with our parents. I think what's really important in our conversations with parents and staff is how important it is to always keep in mind that our students in this program will still be held to the same expectations when it comes to academic content and when they hit third grade to state assessments, but they will be taking their state assessments in Spanish. Next slide. We did also talk to parents about the dual immersion program structure that need to have students who speak either Spanish. Um, well, some Spanish, uh, lots of Spanish, English, but English is not necessary. And we also have students who speak, uh, who were going to learn a third language when they learn Spanish. We have students who speak Punjabi, who are um also interested in attending the program. So those students would be trilingual uh at the end of their sixth grade. Um, and then we also talked about uh starting in kindergarten with learning being done in Spanish the majority of the time. We want parents and then students to understand that in kindergarten, the majority of their day will be in Spanish.
And then I know there's different percentages as they go up in grade, that it shifts from being primarily Spanish, then it's, it's like what? I can't remember the percentage, right? It changes as they go, as they go up.
Yes, so we will be implementing a ninety percent model, so ninety-ten, so ninety percent of the day in kindergarten will be in Spanish. By about fourth grade, we hit the fifty-fifty mark.
Thank you.
Next slide. And then staffing updates, of course. Today, um, you're looking at our job descriptions and our positions. We have had several um educators have approached me or others um expressing interest in dual immersion programs. That's key. Uh, programs die because of the lack of staffing, and so it is key that we have folks that are already expressing interest. I hope that once we fly the positions, that we will have just an amazing pool of teachers um available to us.
Sorry, um, quick question on that. Do we, is there any sort of um, for the teachers that are applying for this, obviously, they have to be bilingual. Is there any sort of testing that we do for our staff when they apply for this, or is it as as far as, as far as the?
Yes.
The being bilingual.
There, um, there is a bilingual, a B-clad credential.
Okay.
Bilingual cross-cultural credential that many of us hold and have held for, I got mine like twenty, thirty years ago. Um, we know that folks continue to um be able to achieve that credential. In lieu of the credential, there is a test that a candidate may take, and that's how I received my bilingual credential. You take the test in Spanish, pass it, and you're um granted the bilingual credential.
Thank you.
So we hope um that we will be interviewing for candidates soon. Uh, and as uh the memo stated, we're looking at a pool of candidates so that we can pivot depending on uh interest in our community. Next slide. Just some curriculum updates regarding this. We know that Benchmark Advance is available in Spanish, which is great. So we will be able to make use of the program that we use in Spanish, in English. Amplify is also available in Spanish. That's great. Just found out Teacher Created Materials has just developed Spanish material, so they dropped off a box, so we can start looking through that. Go Math is not available in Spanish, but if we're looking at something for the district, that we may look at something that has a Spanish version to it. We're um just in conversations with Mrs. Salcedo to begin building classroom libraries and expanding Spanish selections at the Eric White School Library. And then just looking into what STAR and CASP assessments would be for our students in Spanish. Next slide. Just some planning updates. I attended a training virtually last June to get, get us, get myself started. We sent a team, small team, to Sunset Elementary School last spring. And once um we identify our team of teachers, along with our administrators, Mrs. Salcedo, uh, Mr. Emerson and others, we will um attend visits to other DI sites around us. We'd like to go back to Fresno Unified, Sanger, and the possibility of other sites. I've held planning sessions with Mrs. Salcedo and Mr. Emerson. I was just with the EW staff last Tuesday, giving them a little update. And then we're looking to something to to throw out there, the possibility of a dual immersion summer session for those kids that are incoming, just to give them a little feel before the actual school year starts. Next slide. And just parent information, um, more sessions to come for our parents. Um, whatever we do for our K registration, we will be there with a booth recruiting for um families. Application packets will be provided along with the kindergarten enrollment packet. And then um once students are selected, parents will attend a parent orientation session sometime in May. And as mentioned earlier, right now, we have over thirty students who have completed the interest form. Next slide. I think that was it. So that's the update. And then one thing I did forget, oh, just a couple of months ago, Channel Thirty did a piece on our program. So that was also something that we were able to share with parents. Thank you.
Um, I have a few questions on it. Um, are we doing any, uh, this is a great program, by the way. I love it. Uh, on the website, that we're doing a dual emergence, that way other students through, uh, in our neighboring cities to see if they could come here. We are opening it. I know some of other schools doesn't do that. I think we are the only one, right, in this area?
In our area, yes, we have neighboring districts a little further. In our area, yes, we have neighboring districts a little further than us, but in our specific area here, Fowler does not have one. Kingsburg does not have one. So we are ahead in that.
Yeah. So if you could do some kind of advertisement on it, we have open, you know, for the students, newcomers. Also, I remember last year when we created this new emergent program, we had a, we passed a budget for it. These teachers hiring, isn't that part of their budget? Or is it something that we need to look into the future? If we expend more, then are we gonna need more budget for it? Or how do you see that?
And when we talked about, when we've talked about this program, we're looking at the potential of using existing staff. So, right? But we also have Title III funding that is going to help us with a lot of the curricular and some of the staffing if needed. We did set aside funds in the LCAP under LCFF supplemental concentration for two positions. And as Dr. Shepherd said, we'll be applying for that state grant, which could possibly pay for those teachers. So in the end, it may be a savings on the district side if we can get a grant to fund those two positions.
These two positions that we are doing right now, we have thirty students, correct?
Interested so far, yes.
So if, if you don't end up with the thirty students, then we need a one position or?
Yes, we're, we'll have to go with interest. And so what we've, in my training, what, one of the things that districts look at is possible scenarios of combination classes in order to continue the program if you don't have a full. I have no doubt that we will fill one kindergarten classroom, and I think that we could probably do two. But if not, then we're looking at the possibility of one kindergarten classroom and one K one classroom to capture some, to bring back some of those first graders. And there are first graders in the district who want to do this program. And so if we can open an opportunity for those students, we will do that.
And these are permanent positions or?
The, these, so long as the program continues, yes. Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
You know, it does also require us, will require us to be, be very strategic as we move forward in our hiring.
Right.
Right. So going back to intervention teachers at one grade level to the next. And I will just add this, since being here, Mrs. Barahas Reese has been a great thinking partner. And you can just, you can, I can feel, I know we all can feel her dedication to students in Salma Unified. So thank you for that wonderful presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve eighteen I?
Second. I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Rosemary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. So moved.
Thank you.
Hey, excuse me. The next item is an addendum to the facilities use agreement between the district and Fresno County Rural Transit Agency. Currently, FCRTA utilizes a portion of the transportation yard to house its vehicles, its buses. They've recently experienced some theft of parts off of those buses. The catalytic converters are actually being stolen off the buses. They've had about six stolen so far, two different occasions. So they are asking us to allow them to install security lighting and cameras in their area to expand our, our security coverage. And in return, the district would actually supply the electrical costs for their system. We will also benefit from the additional security. But if they leave our prop, no longer use our facilities, the equipment would stay with the transportation yard. And this addendum also extends their use of our facilities through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Do we need any additional security out for our, our area?
Our, they, our area seems, I think we have good enough coverage.
I was gonna say, if we're, if this is going on, we might as well look at what else, you know?
And we can take a look to see. I'll check with Miranda and Mrs. Niederquill and see if she feels that the, the coverage out there is sufficient.
For, to be the time to?
Yeah.
And are they working with their IT team to, with the cameras or?
Yes, we actually, I have them in touch with Marty already to start discussing the, running the electricity out that way. So definitely put them in touch with Mr. Batista as well.
It's gonna cost ten thousand dollars?
And that's just a rough estimate on what the electric, electrical costs would be, the electricity costs.
That's not refundable from them to us, our district?
No, it was kind of, this is what, what we'll do, because it's gonna be on our property. So it's kind of, this is our give. And then when they leave, when they finally obtain their own facilities, they would use leave all of the equipment for our use.
Do we get a say in what type of equipment they put up?
No.
Yeah, I, I think long as we get access to their cameras, we don't have any problems.
Oh, yeah, I don't think.
We get our full access to those cameras.
Yeah, I'll discuss that.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion.
I had to be Jennifer. I think she's done every one.
Motion from Roger and a second from Rosemary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. So moved.
Hey, the next item is to designate signers for three different accounts. Bank of America has recently gone through an audit review and they found some areas. Two of these are for two accounts that need to be changed. The first one for the revolving fund is just to update the signers for that account. The second one is for the Lincoln ASB account. They currently have the account under just Abraham Lincoln Middle School ASB account. And actually, the legal name, because it's our tax ID number, has to be the school district with doing business as. So they have to change that one. The lunch fund was actually set up as a personal account when it was first opened. And so they have to close that account and reopen a government account. And in, as such, we have to update all of the signature cards. And they need these resolutions in order to move forward with processing the accounts.
So quick question on this. So in looking at these, when you have staff turnover, how do, do we have a process in place to make sure that when we have staff? And specifically, Teresa's on two of these.
Correct.
To make sure that when staff turnover happens, that those cards get updated and don't just get, you know, carried on.
Carried on. Yes, which, which we have found during this process.
Absolutely.
We found someone who was still on one account.
Absolutely.
Should have been on there. So we will make it a point when those persons are, when people leave the district to make sure that they are updated with the new personnel.
Some sort of, something in place, some sort of system in place to make sure that those get changed as personnel.
Yes, we will do that.
I'll make a motion to approve eighteen Ks.
Second.
I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. So moved.
All right, thank you.
At this time, we'll go on to the Employment Agreement Amendment, number one, for our superintendent. In May of twenty twenty-one, we approved a thirteen-month contract for Dr. Marilyn Shepherd to serve as our superintendent of the Salma Unified School District in an effort to continue our board-directed goals and provide stability and continuity through these challenging times. Dr. Shepherd has agreed to continue as superintendent and extend her contract. The Employment Agreement Amendment extends the date of Dr. Shepherd's employment as superintendent through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. There are no other changes to her contract. Do we have any questions, comments from the board?
No, I think it's great that Dr. Shepherd's doing great. I think she's, she's wing for our school and really care it. And it's just from me, though. I probably wanted her to another three more years.
That's what I, yeah, I was gonna, I agree with that.
One year at a time.
Yeah. So just so everybody understands, I know the community and a lot of the workers or the employees don't get to see a lot of the internal stuff. But the culture has changed in a lot of, most, it is because of Dr. Shepherd and a new board or a new makeup of a board. But there has been a lot of things not going right in Salma Unified. And we know that it's turning around. All, we're all representatives. We all like to change. We all like to get all the information we can and vote. And it's in, actually, the votes are pretty easy when you have all the information.
Right.
They've all been easy. The, the community hears things through social media and it's distorted. It's not, a lot of it isn't even true. And they run with it. But if you pay attention to every single meeting in sequence as it goes, you see what's going on. As a parent, I love it. I, you know, the accountability that's happening internally is amazing. And whoever doesn't get it, that's too bad. Too bad for them. So anyway, it's because Dr. Shepherd, and Dr. Shepherd is very passionate. I know some people say, oh, she's really hard. She's mean. No, it's passion. It's passion to do the right thing. And this board is right behind it. So.
Yeah, I, I, she started Laura Good programs and we wanna see the results on it.
Yes.
We wanna see that has our improvements on our school scoring systems and all this stuff.
So you see, you see what's happening, student achievement, you know, what they're trying to do. Plans. There is never no plans here, man. And that's just to be honest.
Any other comments from the board? If you have any public comment at this time? Seeing none. I need a motion to approve.
I, I would love, yeah, thank you. I would love, I would love the motion to accept this addendum.
I second it.
I have a motion from Roger and a second from Nick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. So moved.
Congratulations.
Very excited to have you stay.
And I, let me just add one more point. Change is very hard, especially when you're not used to it. Salma Unified, it hasn't been used to it. But it's happening now. So just like to thank the board and Dr. Shepherd and the rest of the administration, Mr. Alvarado, Mrs. Woods, and so on, everybody.
All right, going on to the consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board votes unless a member of the board, staff or public requests specific items be discussed and or removed from the consent agenda. It is understood that the administration recommends approval on all consent agenda items. Each item on the consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Roger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Please note, Rosemary was not available for the vote. And so moved. And we on to board reports.
So I'm passing that out for everybody.
Oh, for everybody?
Uh huh, yeah, that's one for everybody.
Thank you.
I think there's one for everybody.
Oh, no, there's, there's one more.
Okay. All right. So I'll start with the board report with we received a positive certification from Fresno County Superintendent of Schools on our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two first interim report. Do I need to read it?
No.
Okay. All right, Roger, paragraph one.
No. I think what I appreciated, they noted that we really took time to look at our position control and manage all that. So I think that that's real positive. And I know Mrs. Winter, as president, saw other kinds of letters from the county. This is a good, this was a good one. So we're real pleased with it.
So thank you, you guys, for all your hard work in putting this together. We like getting this positive report. Yeah. Do we have any other items for board members for their board report?
Mrs. Alanese does.
I do.
Yes.
I have to Google it.
Google it.
Do we need the word repeated?
Can you use it in a sentence, please?
That was the most awesome. I have the most.
They're so fun.
Time over there. And I didn't want to be the one that rang the bell. We were wrong. So I felt so bad. So it was just wonderful. Those kids were amazing. Mrs. Chapa did a great job of just, it was just awesome. It was awesome. I, I took the time off of work and it was worth it.
Wonderful. And I want to thank you for filling in for me.
Oh, yeah. Anytime.
Yeah.
I was like, what? So I named Mrs. Wood to be the one that says the.
The dinger of the bell.
The mean one?
The word, the word master. Can you read the definition, please?
Yes.
One time I had to give the definition of the word yellow.
A color bright like the sun?
It was awesome. It was just amazing.
Fantastic.
All right, any other board reports? All right. Superintendent's report.
Well, I already, we already talked about the spelling bee. And again, I, at the last minute, I was unable to participate. Mrs. Jensen was tied up, but I called our clerk, Mrs. Alanese, and she readily took the position. I want to thank you. I knew she would want to. The only thing is I said they needed to give her a box to stand up on. So she could be tall like me. And she said she needed two boxes. So the Young Authors Fair started today. I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. A over there.
Yes, just before we leave the spelling bee, I do want to recognize the Garfield team because they really stepped in. Principal Monica Chapa, Barbara Frenness, who, every year, I guess she gives Christmas presents to the insider district office. I, I walked in, it was a big container of popcorn that lasted a couple of months and it was delicious. So I thanked Barbara when I saw her. Mitchell Diaz, Adriana Cordero, and Santos Gonzalez, they all stepped in. Because normally, this is work that is done by the administrative assistant to, to my position who moved on to a position in Parlier. And then another assistant, Soya Biesenior, Biesenior also took a different position. So it was kind of just left in limbo a little bit, although they did a lot of work prior to leaving. And Monica Chapa and her team stepped in and it was, it was beautifully decorated. You know, in my time at Fresno County Office of Ed and around other parts of the county, I always heard about the Salma Spelling Bee. And I experienced it this year. It was, it was just incredible. Do you want to celebrate the, the winners? Sixth grade winner is Kurti Tohan from Wilson Elementary School. She'll be moving on to the county spell-off. Which is, I forget the date, I think it's, I'm sure it is March fifteenth. And then our fifth grade winner is Andrea Nava from Eric White Elementary School. And the fourth place winner actually went a very long time. We almost ran out of words. We went to a tiebreaker and they just kept going back and forth. And eventually we had a winner in fourth grade, although the only folks that moved forward to the county are fifth and sixth grade. So again, thanks to Principal Chapa and to the team at Garfield Elementary School for really stepping in, doing a fantastic job at the district spelling, spelling bee. In terms of our Young Authors Fair, again, just a reminder of our timeline. We are currently at the place where we're judging the books. We'll be doing that today, tomorrow, and if needed on the seventeenth. I, into my thirties, I shared this story with Dr. Shepherd this afternoon. Into my, about the thirty-first or thirty-second reading of a book, I came across this book and I, and I looked at it and I thought to myself, oh, what a great effort this, this young person had put into this book. And I began opening the book and it probably was the most powerful fifth grade book I have read. And I invite you all, we'll get copies of it, cuz I think it, I mean, it's just a fantastic reading about a piece of paper. I'll leave you with that cliffhanger. And it is, it's just a great read. Um, I will say that the, the hard work of our teachers, our school librarians and the students is being witnessed more this year than ever before because of absences, both uh, at the adult level and at the student level. Kids have been challenged in finishing the work, right? We do have um, uh, we do have uh, books being turned in, being graded, evaluated. We are going to get first, second and third place winners in their categories, be moving on to Fresno County Office of Ed. And we're going to extend the timeline so kids can finish. Every student will be receiving a gift uh, for participation. And I I think it's just a tribute to the adults, the adults in front of them on their campuses that are pushing kids to continue to do the work. And I think that's very important. Uh, other things on the timeline, March fifth is when we send permission slips um, that the students will be moving forward to the Young Authors Fair and at the County Office of Ed. And then March eleventh is when those books are due at the Fresno County, Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. So, so with that, through all the challenge and all the struggle, the show is still continuing to go on with the Young Authors Fair and we're looking forward to smaller site presentations. Once we finish grading and awarding the first and second, third place finishers, those will be moved on to the school sites and each school site will be uh, presenting their own uh, site awards for their students. It's been a fantastic journey so far with the spelling bee and the Authors Fair and that's the report on both.
Bring it.
Um, we should recognize those, the students in the next meeting, we're doing a wrestling, maybe.
The wrestling and the.
Yeah, I just wrote down, we'll bring them to the next spelling bee. And then we have the middle school students. I don't think we brought the spelling bee. I was at that one. So the middle school spelling bee winners as well.
How many, how many books did we have turned in so far?
So we should have, um, it's hard to call it an official count because we've extended, right? For sites to, even though they missed the date, to still encourage the kids to get them done. Um, I will say that shared with me from the lib, school librarians, that it's, it is a, a lesser amount than in past years. But I think under the situations and the conditions, the fact what we can celebrate is that we did have um, participants and they did a fantastic job. We'll get those numbers um, by the next board meeting, just so we give everybody an opportunity to, under the certain conditions, to go ahead and finish.
Fantastic, thank you.
And having, I I've read some of those in the past to help judge as a hard job.
It is.
It is. It's, it is. So um, I'm reporting on the Williams Uniform Complaints Quarterly Reports. We had no, no complaints. Uh, so just to let you know. And I would like to acknowledge Jill Wagner, who's here this evening, and I hope you enjoyed the board briefs uh, from the last meeting, so we will continue doing that. Thank you, Jill, for coming and working with our team. Let's give her a hand. She's does a great job with that. And I think that's helping get the word out to people. And then we do have a rendering and I left it in my office of the new softball stadium, uh, the girls softball stadium. I went to the Salma uh, Clovis East game and I had a parent at the varsity team ask me, so when are we getting our lights and everything? Well, unfortunately, it will be after the season, but it will be done this summer. And um, so I'll bring that when rendering, but it is in my office, so I think they'll all be excited about that. And then also, uh, Norma Barajas Reese is holding LCAP um, forums and there's one, they, one was on the tenth and one's March first from six to seven thirty. It's a Zoom link. And I know she gets this out, but I want you to know that those are occurring. And that's it.
I need one more motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Did I get to do this? And that's a wrap.